And I'm going to call the meeting to order, and I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
City council members, Brown?
Here.
Hazen?
Here.
Percy?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
That's a full house. Very good. All right, next is the approval of minutes from our previous meeting on April 22, 2019. Is there comments, corrections?
I'll move approval of the minutes.
Jared Mueller?
I'll second.
Okay, that's Mary Alice Wu makes a second. Okay, so discussion, corrections, thoughts? None? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. They're approved. Are there additions to our agenda? Okay, I don't see anybody raising their hand. Thank you. All right, now it's time for public input. I got one yellow slip, let me see, but it's going to be at the time, so we'll hold on to that. Is anybody else who would like to approach the city council during this open commentary period? Are people trying to fill out a form right now? I'll give you half a minute, all right? You have to write real fast. And perhaps I even know it by heart, perhaps, I'm not sure, but we'll see. Yeah. All right, we can come back to, well, maybe we'll come back to public input, all right? We have an intent for public input, we'll just come back to it, we'll go to presentations, are there presentations by any staff or the public? We didn't have any listed? No? Okay. All right, so now we're going to step forward again to staff report. Is there a staff report at this time? Anyone? Okay, no staff report. All right. Yeah, okay. All right, then we're going to go to, how's public input coming along? Okay, all right, we're going to go on then. We're going to talk about our first ordinance, ordinance number 2019-05029, an ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter 22, Article 6, Section 22-91A, which is an amendment to the food and beverage tax ordinance. Okay, Elizabeth Hannah, and help? Maybe I could be introduced to the help, I'm not sure I know the...
I'd like to introduce Chris Francisco, who's our financial services manager, and she produces all those amazing financial reports that you all get.
I know you more by name than by sight, so thank you. Okay, Chris?
Okay. So the ordinance you have before you tonight would increase... Oh, sorry. The ordinance you have before you tonight would increase the packaged liquor tax to 3%. As part of the mayor's strategy for building a foundation for the future, we need to increase revenues and decrease expenditures. Did you want to speak about that?
Yeah, I did, I just want to add at this point, because folks watching on TV or in the audience may not have this background, but you may recall that in fiscal year 2019 budget process, we looked at our financial forecast, and we determined that we would need to, over a course of several years, either reduce expenditures or increase revenues by a total of $2.5 million. In the FY 2019 budget, the current year budget, we reduced expenditures by a little more than half a million dollars. For FY '20, we looked at that forecast in January, and we determined at that time we were on track, which meant that we still had to reduce expenditures and/or increase revenues by a total of $2 million. And so the plan for the FY '20 budget was to reduce expenditures by at least half a million dollars and to increase revenues by a quarter of a million dollars. So I don't want to, I just wanted to kind of give a little context to what Chris is going to say.
Okay, thank you. So when we were considering possible revenue sources, we wanted to ask a couple things. Will this revenue source increase the cost of essential goods and services, and what will it cost to implement? The packaged liquor tax has remained constant at 1% since it was approved by council eight years ago. In addition, the city hasn't increased liquor license fees for the past three years and will not be increasing fees again this year. So increasing the packaged liquor tax to 3% would not affect the cost of essential goods and services, and the cost to implement it would be minimal compared to a new tax. If approved, the increase is expected to generate $220,000 annually in the general fund. It would be effective July 1, 2019, and it would affect residents and visitors who purchase packaged liquor in the city of Urbana. This, for example, would amount to a 50 cent amount on $25 of packaged liquor purchases. A couple weeks ago, we asked businesses to come in tonight and comment, or they could have emailed me. I did receive a few emails, and those comments are in front of you tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those for you now.
And we do have a member from the public who'd like to speak, and so I guess probably now would be the time, well, let's see, I guess first I could take the questions from staff, since they're sitting right there. Cheryl Hirsty? Cherise? Sorry.
The question that I had when I was reading this was, would the increase, because champagne has no tax at all, so would this cause any increase of business over to champagne rather than businesses staying here in Urbana? Does this, and I'm trying to understand the whole packaged liquor thing, and I'm assuming that means like, you know, six packs of beer, fifths of whiskey, that kind of thing, right?
Right. The packaged liquor tax is on, for example, six packs or bottles of wine, it's for off-premise consumption?
Right, so it's like, like when you go buy beer at a convenience store?
Right.
Or wine from Walmart?
Right.
Stuff like that, okay.
And it doesn't affect the food and beverage tax, which would remain at 1.5%, and that's for on-premise consumption?
Mm-hmm.
And food that's immediately consumable.
So my question is, do you think that people will, you know, not flood over to champagne so that they don't, I mean, I'm thinking, it's just, the consumer does not, well, I'm assuming also that the cost of that tax will be passed on to the consumer.
Yeah, I would assume it would be passed on to the consumer. You know, in any individual situation, I can't tell you what an individual person would do, but I would think for the most part, on a $25 purchase, an extra 50 cents is probably not going to be enough to prompt somebody to drive across town to, you know, to buy whatever they're buying, wine, beer, whatever. Is it possible in some cases? Sure.
Guess it depends on how close you are to Wright Street, but...
Yeah, I mean, you know, I have a friend who will drive across town and probably spend more on gas to save 20 cents on a dozen eggs, but it's a personal judgment.
Okay.
Eric?
Do we, can, is it possible to figure out whether the imposition of the tax eight years ago actually affected the amount of liquor sales in, I guess it's easier to track the amount of liquor sales once you've imposed the tax, because you have this revenue thing, so maybe it would be hard to make a judgment on that, but do you have an informed opinion on whether that affected?
Exactly. So my informed opinion would be, my opinion would be no, it probably did not, but you're right, we don't really have the data to prove or disprove that, because there was no packaged liquor tax prior to that.
I've tried to do a little research prior to this on elasticity of, you know, of price versus consumption for beer and wine and distilled spirits, and it seems as though we're here within a margin where it's, may not make a discernible difference in the rate of consumption, and I guess your projections of the revenue say that you think the sales will be as if they weren't affected. Is that true?
Yes, correct.
Okay, first Mary Allison, then Dean.
So in your memo, you noticed that businesses that currently pay the packaged liquor tax were notified by mail for this comment and to come and provide comment tonight. Two of the businesses sent in emails. One was Boomerang Bars Grill, and the other one was Crane Alley, and also, there are also the Blackbird Owners. It says that they oppose this tax, and the staff's comment is neither have reported any packaged liquored sales since the council adopted the 1% in 2011. So I guess my question is, how were people notified? Was it a certain kind of liquor license, and then why do we get these notes from people that doesn't apply to them?
So we did include all businesses who have a license that would allow them to sell packaged liquor.
Okay.
Liquor. So if their liquor license allows it, whether or not they're selling it currently, we notified them as well.
So theoretically, either of these businesses could sell packaged liquor today?
Correct.
Okay. So approximately, do you know how many institutions, how many businesses it will impact in the city that are currently collecting tax?
There's about 30 or 40 businesses right now that are collecting packaged liquor tax.
It would be good to know if this is moved forward, what percentage of those in the raw number of people who only sell packaged liquor, because that's their sole source of income versus a grocery store that might have other income. So it'd be good to know that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Dean, did you want to have a question?
Yeah, I had the same question as Mary Alice, exactly how many people, or how many businesses are licensed to sell, and if you could, I'd appreciate that being broken down into if they have another business connected with it or not, like food or whatever. But philosophically speaking, I don't think that people are going to necessarily drive to champagne to save 50 cents or $1.50 on their liquor, but I think the danger lies in somebody wanting to open another liquor store might avoid opening it here because of that, because it's just discouraging, and I guess I'd like to see us spend less, or focus more on spending less than raising taxes, and I'm not saying I won't cooperate with moving it forward, but it's not with happiness. So, thank you.
Okay, Bill Brown?
Yeah, I know you mentioned that it's pretty inexpensive to implement rather than a new tax, but we did bring up the possibility of Airbnb tax, so right now, nobody, you know, hundreds of rooms are being rented every week, and I know it's not allowed in our zoning code apparently, and there needs to be some changes, but it's ongoing, and we aren't going to try to stop it hopefully, and I just wondered where we are with trying to get something from that, and if you've estimated how much that would bring in?
Well, it's pretty darn near impossible to estimate how much it would bring in, because we just have no data at all. But that is something that we will continue to work on. There's a lot of different things happening with that, there's potentially some changes at the state level that would impact that, but I would expect that that's something we'll implement before we adopt the budget in FY '21.
Okay. Any more questions from?
Us.
Mayor?
It's not a question, just a comment. I wanted to address the concerns from folks about the city reducing spending, and I wanted to repeat and reiterate what Elizabeth mentioned previously, is that we are addressing our $2.5 million structural budget deficit. In this current fiscal year, we did reduce spending by a half million dollars, we're proposing to do the same in the next fiscal year, and there will be additional reductions after that. By the end of the coming fiscal year, we will have eliminated the equivalent of almost 10 full-time equivalent positions in the city. So we're taking the responsibility for looking at spending very, very seriously, in addition to our revenue enhancements. The other thing that's upcoming in the coming fiscal year, of course, is the recreational marijuana possibility, and we'll be looking very closely at that. So we are looking at other sources of revenue, and I did want to emphasize again, we have not, we recognize some of the disparities in the liquor license expenses between, especially champagne and Urbana, and that's one of the reasons we've held the liquor license fees constant for the last three years, and as we revise our liquor code, we're in the process of doing that right now, we'll be looking at fees for every single class of license, so there may be some changes coming on that. But I just wanted to make sure people know, we are taking our budget issues extremely seriously, and that will be part of our budget presentation next week.
Okay. So thanks, that's probably all we have from the council to you at this moment, and we do have a person who'd like to come forward and speak on the topic, and Darren Riggs. Would you please come forward? You'll have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. This is my first time speaking before the city council, so apologize if I have to go back and forth to my notes a little bit, but thank you for allowing me to speak on the topic here this evening. Prior to this, I actually listened to the mayor's press conference on the budget from back in January that's available on YouTube, and so I kind of understood the problem is not really with increasing costs, it's with the declining revenue, and I don't have the perfect solution to that problem, but the good news is that I don't think that we are part of the problem. As you know, we opened in 2016 on the east side of Urbana there, the southeast corner, and what has turned out to be thankfully a popular venue, and so we're doing all right. It was, you know, previously an abandoned property, which brought in $0 of sales in food and beverage and packaged liquor tax for several years before we opened, and just did some quick math, and in 2018, looks like we brought in greater than $16,000 of, between sales, food and beverage, and packaged liquor tax to the city of Urbana. And we did all this with, really, we're not in a TIF district, so there weren't any incentives to open the business out there, but we did the math, and it worked, and, you know, fortunately we can also make a good product, and so we've been successful out there based on those circumstances. And I don't want to, you know, this is, it's not really my place to talk about the incentives and what makes a TIF district and what doesn't, and I don't really understand very well, you know, you guys are the expert at that, really is what I'm trying to say. But, you know, our crosstown friendly rivals did receive more than that amount of money that we supplied in 2018 as part of their improvements that they did to their property in opening up their business. So there was a lot of math and figuring out what we had to do to open a successful business, and part of that was the decision that we made to include taxes in our displayed price that we provided to the consumer. So they see a dollar amount on the menu, that is how much they pay, and then we calculate the tax, you know, reversed off of that, and so the effect of this is going to be either we have to change our menu prices, or we're just going to absorb the cost of the additional tax. But despite all that, you know, it was close enough, and it made sense to open in Urbana. Our frustration, I guess, is that the rules since we opened have continued to change. As you know, the food and beverage tax went up two years ago, I believe, somewhere around that timeframe from 10, which made it from 10 to 10.5%, so it went from 1 to 1.5% on food and beverage. That was honestly a bigger effect on our bottom line because of the, just how much people consume at our place versus how much they buy there and take home. The state changed laws surrounding brewery licenses, and having, certain types of licenses could not have other brands available, and we chose the type of license where we could, but that had other restrictions on it. Well, the state since changed those restrictions on the type of license that we didn't pick, and so now those people can do the things that we chose the license with extra restrictions. You don't have anything to do with that, but just as an example of the rules changing. So, you know, what we're talking about today is changing the rules again a little bit. It would be applicable to growlers and kegs that we sell directly to consumers for people to take home and enjoy off-premise, as they discussed earlier. Last year, it's, like I said, it's not a majority of what we sell, but it was around $1,300, I believe, and this would, you know, basically triple that. And then, so, and there was no additional cost to the city, I guess, in, you know, how we did business that is, would be the justification behind this tax. So that's just the frustrating part. It's not the end of the world, we're going to survive, we're going to get through it, but it seemed like we didn't want to let this go by without some comment. I don't have the answers for you on the budget deficit, but I do have one thing to consider. Because as a local manufacturer, we do bring in more than just the packaged liquor taxes, you may want to consider applying this ordinance to packaged liquor not produced in the city of Urbana. So just a thought. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
Are there questions for Darren? Yes. Jared?
Darren, thanks for coming to talk to us.
You bet.
I just got a quick question for you. Do you know, or did you break down how much package tax versus food and beverage tax you paid? Because I know from obviously extensive conversations with your brother that growlers and kegs straight out of the house are not by any means a large portion of your guys' net profits.
No, so if you look at the, just the 1.5% on sales, the food and beverage tax, and the 1% in packaged liquor tax, this is not taking into the account the 9% underneath that, of which the city gets, I think, a percent and a half, but just those on top of the 9%, it was over $6,500 on the food and beverage, and as I said, just over 13 on the packaged liquor. So that's $1,300.
Total for both?
For 2018, no, so the total for both would be just over $8,000.
Okay, so maybe $2,000 in package alone?
As I said, just over $1,300.
Oh, $1,300?
Right.
Okay, I see, I got you.
Sorry.
Thanks, Carol. I had a different image of that in my head. And, okay, thank you. I'll reserve questions.
Okay. Anybody else have a question for Darren? All right, thank you very much for your input.
Thank you.
And we also know that we've had input from Christie Grassman, the owner of Boomerangs Bar and Grill, which Alice you mentioned, is that correct? Yes. So conversation, comment?
Dennis?
Yes, Jared, go ahead.
Just to follow procedure and much to probably the dismay of our local owners, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to send this forward so we can pursue discussion. So I'm going to move ordinance number 2019-05-029, an ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter 22, Article 6, Section 22-91A, an amendment to the food beverage tax ordinance be sent to the full council with a recommendation for approval.
Second then, is there one?
Second.
Okay, Cherise?
A second.
Okay. All right, conversation and debate. Eric?
So I think we should discuss at least briefly the suggestion that Darren made to exempt product that's actually produced in Urbana. That'll have a very, very small revenue impact, but might have a nice, would have, would be a good, well, it would be a good message, and maybe in the future would help to encourage that kind of business here, but I'm not sure how much that would complicate administration of the tax, but maybe staff might want to comment on that.
And I think our attorney would like to make a comment.
I think a little research on that would be necessary to see whether we could charge one entity who does exactly the same thing as another entity, differential in that kind of tax. I don't know what the answer is, I'd have to research it.
Yeah, let's at least give that some thought. I mean, I believe that, I believe that this direction, if there's ever a good direction to go for revenue, additional revenue, this is one of the least bad, but I also think that we should consider this particular wrinkle on it.
All right, Dean?
I just wanted to point out, I think the key difference here is that they're producing the product in their facility versus just reselling it. I think there's a distinct difference there.
Sounds like a new type of licensing. Bill Brown, and then?
It seems like even if we couldn't, even if the state doesn't allow differentiation, we could probably do some kind of production credit or something, a rebate. I do kind of like that idea, I hadn't thought of it. Thanks, Darren.
It pays to come to the council sometimes, doesn't it? We don't know yet, though, that's just hyperbole. Yes, Jared?
So two other comments from somebody who's been previously very much involved in liquor sales in town. I know from my experience with package sales that that would, in most cases, I know Riggs has obviously chosen what I would call the higher path of rounding out their dollars on their purchases rather than applying taxes, but most everywhere else, you're going to pay a tax. And in my experience, everybody passed that, if there was an extra 1%, it went to the consumer. You paid it to the city, but the consumer paid for it, and you had to account for it. I know that to your point, Eric, if you considered the theory that if we didn't have the tax before, and then we did, in theory, if people were that scared of it, then we would have generated zero revenue from it, because everyone would have chosen not to buy in Urbana because we had that tax. And an additional 2% on 1%, I mean 50 cents on $25, I would agree with Elizabeth's view that that's not going to drive people away. And would also, just as a consumer in Urbana, like to remind folks that I'm proud to pay taxes in Urbana, and I choose to buy in Urbana because I know that my taxes are coming back to the city and going to be used for the services that the city provides. So there is an upside, yes, people will have to pay more, but, you know, you're helping your community out by choosing to buy in Urbana, so those are my comments, thanks.
Others? All right. I've got a comment. So Dean, would you want to, I'm going to pass the chair to you for a second.
Wow.
How about that? Power.
Mr. Roberts, do you have a comment?
Yeah, so nobody, I mean, the other thing that we could, you know, look at is the size of the increase, and, you know, it's from 1% to 3%, and nobody's talked about, well, is 2% adequate?
Thank you. Dean?
You can have the chair back, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you, then. All right, any other further comment?
I have a question.
Yes, Mary Alice.
So I am of support of researching to figure out if we can support locally sourced items here in town. I'm curious how that moves this forward procedurally, if we want staff to review something, and if this needs to go out of committee tonight, how does that work? I'm just looking around at different people, because I don't know who has the answer to that question.
Okay, Elizabeth Hannah?
So I think we'll need to have a discussion internally tomorrow about how much time we need to look into that, but if that was something that would require more time, then probably what we would do is we would delay this and push back the effective date. So right now, it has an effective date of July 1, so that, and we're looking at this now, so that we have time to notify all the businesses and update our forms and do everything that goes along with it. So if it takes longer, we'll need a little more time.
So would it be appropriate to make an amendment to Jared's motion to move this forward with staff direction? Is that inappropriate?
I have a question.
Sure he has another question. I'm just wondering, what's the appropriate way to move this forward, to include staff direction?
Is the clerk, make a comment, Charlie?
Yeah, well, I was going to say, if you could...
Yeah, well, I was gonna say, if you could send this to council with a recommendation that staff research it and include it, if it's, if that's, uh, if it's doable, uh, you could send it to council with no recommendation and, and see what happens next week, uh, and then just simply hold it in council for another two weeks. Um, and that would, that would keep the ball rolling, and that, that way you'd know you'd be voting on either next week or in two weeks from, from next week.
All right. So that's an answer, and before, all right, maybe we need to go to the lawyer first. Jim?
You could also keep it in committee for another session. I don't think it's gonna take a week to research this. I will put one of my stealthy assistant city attorneys on it tomorrow.
Okay, then we'll go to Sharice and then you.
I guess my question is, when we're talking about exempting the, um, Urbana business that produces, are we talking about keeping their tax at one percent while the other ones move up to three, or exempting them altogether?
So I'm gonna say, I, I have a feeling that Jim is correct in his concern about taxing businesses at different rates for essentially the same product. I, my guess is that we'll find that we can't legally do that, um, but the, but the credit idea probably is more promising, um, so I'm not gonna say that we can definitely do that or how we might be able to do it at this point.
Okay.
But I think Jim and I will be talking first thing in the morning.
Okay, Jared?
Charlie, just as a person who made the motion, uh, and from my experience, just because the language pertaining to this addressing Mary Alice's concern isn't necessarily in the ordinance as it's written right now, does not mean that it cannot be inserted prior to our vote on it in the full council next week, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Especially if you add, if you, especially if you add just the direction to staff to research it, which you've sort of done.
Sure. So, I think the message is out there, but I don't think we need to amend my motion.
Then perhaps we're ready to make a vote. Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
And all those opposed? Okay, that's going to go forward to council with a recommendation of approval and some staff direction. All right, that takes us to, um, item number eight. Oh, I'm gonna, I guess I'm gonna backtrack here for a moment and do public input. We do have, uh, two, um, items from pub, the public, and, um, neither of them are related to a particular item on the agenda, so I'll just read them. Uh, Bishop King James Underwood, uh, would like to say that he's still concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues, and Elderess Melinda Carr continues to say that she has concerns about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues, the equality and historic impact. So, thank you. All right, so we're gonna go to item eight, item ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash oh five dash zero three oh, and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter One, Section One dash ten J, regarding the schedule of fines for certain local traffic code violations for two thousand nineteen. Okay, and Elizabeth?
Yep.
Welcome.
Good evening. Before you tonight are the proposed changes to Chapter Twenty-three. The changes outlined are in Exhibit A of the attached ordinance. The changes include an increase to the parking late fine after seven days, adding additional late fine after thirty days, no changes are proposed, that would change the initial fine amount of a parking violation. The last time major changes were approved was back in November two thousand and nine. The proposed changes would take effect July first, twenty nineteen. This would allow staff time to make adjustments in the software to accommodate those changes. The proposed changes would generate approximately seventy-two thousand dollars in the general operating fund, and I will take any questions that you have.
All right, it's time for questions. Do people have some for Elizabeth? Okay, Bill Brown?
Um, yeah, thanks for the, the memo, it was pretty, pretty explanatory. On the warning letter, letter that they get after four, or, four or more unpaid violations, do they have an opportunity to set up a payment plan?
Yes, yep, yep.
Okay. And then, I know the state, um, if, if somebody has more than ten unpaid tickets, the state has a program where you can try to collect those and they will actually, um, take someone's driver's license away. I know there's a bill in the, in the legislature to, um, change that, and it was in the legislature last session, didn't pass, it passed the senate this, um, session and is, been back and forth in committees in the House, I'm not sure if it's gonna pass. Do we do that?
So the city of Urbana has been suspending driver's license since the nineteen eighties, to my knowledge. Just had somebody from nineteen ninety-one pay off their old driver's license suspension last week. Um, we, I have not submitted a suspension for a driver's license, uh, to the state for several years, I can't even remember how long. When we, um, initiated the boot, after five parking ticket violations, um, that all were older than thirty days, that really eliminated people accumulating more than the five violations on their account. I mean, that, there are some accounts that have more than five violations, but they're no longer in town for us to try to collect off of. So, um, but they haven't re- reached that ten threshold.
Okay, I mean, I'd just request, actually, that we not do that. It seems like it's a pretty minimal, um, amount, and if this bill finally gets passed, it's gonna be basically retroactive so people can try to get refunds or get their, it's somehow gonna be retroactive, I don't remember exactly. Um, I guess it, it'd rescind the revocation of their driver's license if it's still revoked. Um, but it's, you know, I think if you, if people wanna support the bill, it's Senate Bill seventeen eighty-six, um, and it may, I think it went back to Rules Committee in the House, and will probably be coming back to transportation, um, in the next few weeks, hopefully. Um, it's called the License to Work Act, that one is. I think that's, yeah, I think that's the only questions I had, thanks.
Do other, are there other questions at this time? Sharice?
Um, I just wanted to understand, after it said, uh, third and subsequent offenses, um, is that, if a person gets a parking ticket a third time, it's automatically fifteen bucks, right? That's what I'm trying to...
Um, so we, some of our violations have a escalated, or we call it a graduated fine schedule.
Right.
Um, so there's the first offense, and then if they get another one for the same type of violation, they get a second offense.
Okay.
And then if they get a third violation for that same offense, it is that higher fine amount for each time, fourth, fifth, sixth, continuing.
Okay.
But it does reset on a three hundred and sixty-five day rolling calendar.
That's what I was gonna ask, is that like for the, the entire time this person is driving from, you know, or is there a sundown?
Yeah.
Uh, fee schedule, or, where it's like the next year, it starts all over again?
It's a rolling, right, three hundred and sixty-five. So they do have an opportunity to restart fresh.
Okay. That was really my question, okay.
Yes, Mary Alice.
So I know that we, um, have not gotten the official budget yet, um, the proposed increase in the liquor tax would bring in two hundred and twenty thousand, and this would bring in seventy-two thousand, so we're up to almost three hundred thousand. Um, since that wasn't the number that we got before, I'm wondering, is this not being counted towards fixing the structural deficit?
So yes, it is being counted, so if you'll recall, even beyond FY twenty, we expected to have additional revenue increases and expenditure reductions. So what will happen is, when we do the next forecast, as we begin the budget process for fiscal twenty twenty-one, um, then we would expect to see that the amount that we need to, um, absorb to get our budget back on track should be a little bit lower.
So, the reality is, is that we're increasing the amount of revenue, so to speak, to about three hundred thousand, not two fifty?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. I have a question, and it's not really related to a fine that we're talking about tonight, but I see that in your list of Exhibit A three, um, there is a fine for abandoned and inoper- inoperable vehicles on private property, fine not to exceed two hundred and fifty dollars a day. At what point does a car parked in somebody's driveway become inoperable and, um, to the attention of our departments?
So parking enforcement does track for private property nuisances, um, if there's no license plates or the registration tag were expired, um, if the vehicle were up on jacks, the tires were flat or missing, um, we would, we have a procedure, um, in the city code where we send them a notification letter, and they're given a certain period of time to respond if they need extensions to repair the vehicle, move the vehicle, find somewhere else to house the vehicle, uh, we will do that. We will work with the homeowner as long as they're reaching out to us. Um, to actually remove a vehicle and issue them one two hundred and fifty dollar fine, we only issue one two hundred and fifty dollar fine. Um, it's a very long process and it can, it takes months and months and months, and we have to get a search warrant to even go on the property to have the vehicle removed.
It's a big issue.
I'm sorry?
It's a big issue to do that.
It is, it is, yes. It's very time consuming, so we would much rather work with the resident, the homeowner, any way we possibly can.
And, um, so if the, if the vehicle isn't really operating and, uh, it's been kind of stored, you know, next to your house for three years and hasn't moved and there's dust on it, what would be the, um, motivation for a person to keep renewing his license tag?
Maybe, well, we've had people where they're sentimental.
Sentimental reasons? Okay.
It was their mother's car, or someone else in their family's car.
But, so you have to have some kind of reason to choose to do that?
Well, I mean, that would be their reason.
That would be their reason, yes.
I mean, that would...
I'm not taking it, yes.
Right.
All right. That just, that maybe needed a little clarification, it was an interesting thing to pick up. All right, Eric?
So I try to take note whenever we talk about fines, of the fact that dollar value fines hit low-income people harder than they hit higher-income people. I think in this case, for the amounts of all of the fines, including the increased fines, are sort of in the range where if you can afford to operate a vehicle, you can afford the fine, except for this two hundred and fifty dollars a day for an abandoned, inoperable vehicle.
Yeah, a day.
I could imagine a circumstance, you know, you know, case histories, I don't know any of the case histories on this. I can imagine circumstances where this could function in a really tragic way, and I would, now I realize that's not a change in the ordinance, that's just something, I guess that I didn't notice before, uh, but, um, I don't know, I guess I'm, we're really considering tonight the increases in the fees, and I'm fine with the increases, you know, with all the fees that are being increased, uh, but I'd really like to know more about the human cost of this two hundred and fifty dollar a day inoperable vehicle, and are there, how, how this actually plays out.
Uh, well, I mean, I've been managing parking for about, that department for about ten years now, um, less than ten times we've issued that fine.
Mm-hmm.
Um, possibly less than five. It's just, I mean, we would, yes, if you look around the city, there are vehicles that probably need to be removed from people's properties. There are vehicles hidden in backyards, parking enforcement just can't go onto a property, a private property. Um, but I can also say how many times we have worked with citizens that are really willing to reach out to us or that parking enforcement has made contact with, um, to ask them to give us a call, so we can work with them to give them time. We would much rather give them time to fix the problem than to penalize them, um, especially if they're showing a good faith effort.
Are, are these, is enforcement of these typically triggered by a communication from a neighbor? Is that the most common?
For private property, yes.
Uh-huh.
Um, some could come out of, um, other departments at the city, um, when they're on a property for another issue, um, it's possible we could get a heads-up from that, but, you know, I would say fifty percent it's neighbors calling. That's how we get the majority of our tips for, um, on-street nuisances of vehicles that are abandoned and inoperable.
Okay. I don't have the feeling that you or anybody in your department wants to destroy anybody's lives, so I will not...
Not today.
I will not pursue this particular item further at this time, but counting on you to administer it humanely.
Okay, we're looking, perhaps, for a motion, but Bill, and then Sharice.
Yeah, I thought of one other question I had, um, written down. Um, I think a while back we talked about additional areas that we could charge for parking, like West Springfield, and maybe some streets in that area. Have you guys looked into that more?
That has been a topic for, of conversation at, um, the last few traffic commission meetings that I've been at. Um, I do believe that's something that they will be looking into even more.
Yes, I'll be, you know, I'm, I'm on that commission, I'm, I am your delegate to that commission, uh, and, uh, we are definitely very concerned about parking on, on West Springfield and between and north of West Springfield up to, uh, up to University, and so that, uh, will be looked at really pretty hard, and you will definite, I'm certain you will hear something, because I think that at least one member of the commission does not think that the present situation is, is or should be sustainable.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
And Sharice?
Just to piggyback on what Eric said about the, um, two hundred and fifty dollar per day fine, do you actually charge someone two hundred and fifty dollars a day, or has that...
I have never charged anyone two hundred and fifty dollars per day.
Okay.
Um, I, and I apologize, I don't, I didn't research that part of it, um, it's never changed since I've been in this position. Um, the, we issue a one two hundred and fifty dollar violation, um, if we have to go on the property with a search warrant and remove that vehicle.
And so it, it isn't per day, it's just...
We, just the one, two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty.
Okay.
I, I am more than happy to research this, um, as far as, like, what the, what it means and where the two hundred and fifty dollar fine comes from, um...
'Cause it does seem excessive.
Yeah, yeah, it would be great if you researched it, because maybe...
I, I would say it may seem excessive, but if we're talking about months and months of staff's time, um, and going, writing up a complaint to go to court, to go to the judge, to have him sign off on a search warrant, to go to the property, to serve the search warrant, to call the tow truck, to have the vehicle removed off of the property, go back to the courthouse to get the complaint.
So basically, the two hundred and fifty dollars is what, court fees?
Well, I mean, staff's time for also, um, you know, you know, going out and taking pictures and documenting that vehicle, parking enforcement's time, um, I mean, it is, I wouldn't, I haven't done a, a user analysis on it, I'm just saying, you know, two hundred and fifty doesn't seem that height, as high to me with all the work that has to go into it.
Okay.
Well, maybe it shouldn't be two hundred and fifty dollars a day, but it should be more than a one-shot two hundred and fifty, for example, because maybe it's costing more than that. Well, yeah, I, you know, this doesn't seem like something that's really an enormous problem, but maybe it would be appropriate to, if, if, to think about adjusting the fine to reflect our costs.
Okay, great. Jared?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion. I'm, I'm gonna move ordinance number twenty nineteen dash zero five dash zero three zero, and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter One, Section One dash ten J, regarding the schedule of fines for certain local, local traffic code violations for two thousand nineteen, be moved forward to the full council with a recommendation for approval.
Seconded. Seconded by Bill Brown. Is there more discussion? Okay, those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
And those opposed? There are none, so that goes forward. All right. Next comes ordinance number twenty, two thousand nineteen dash oh five dash zero three one, and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Twenty-three, Section Twenty-three to two eleven, parking violation procedures. Section 23 to 211, parking violation procedures. Kind of like the same bill, all right. Again, Elizabeth?
This is just something, a section in the code that was overlooked when the ordinance was changed back in 2009. The timeframe for contesting a parking ticket went from 72 hours to seven days. This just corrects that part of the code, so it reads seven days instead of 72 hours.
Yeah, that's pretty good for considering that the section has so many numbers in it. Is there any questions for this? Did Mary Ellis, Mary Ellis, go ahead.
I just wanted to move forward ordinance number 2019-05-031, ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 23, Section 23 to 11, parking violation procedures with a recommendation for approval.
Seconded. Seconded by Eric Jacobson.
Thank you.
Is there discussion? All those indicating, wishing to pass this forward to the city council with approval, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that goes forward. All right, we're moving along. Next comes a resolution number 2019-05-010R, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of an Illinois Arts Council Agency, that's IACA, grant for a youth employment project. And we are getting a presentation of the arts and culture program. John Schneider?
Just a brief presentation. The Illinois Arts Council Agency has awarded this grant for $1,800 to the City of Urbana Arts and Culture Program. Council approval of the resolution is needed for Urbana to accept the grant itself. City would use the funds to hire a local high school intern for the arts and culture programs. They would, this intern would develop monthly e-newsletters and social media content and provide onsite support for all arts and cultures activity in Urbana. Staff recommends approval.
Yeah, that seems just like the kind of thing an intern would be really interested in doing. I could see that. Is there a discussion or questions?
I move approval of receiving this money.
I'll second that.
All right, do you want to read the actual ordinance? So we put that into the record, please.
Yes, for the record. I move approval of a resolution authorizing acceptance of an Illinois Arts Council Agency, IACA, grant for a youth employment project as part of the Urbana, City of Urbana Arts and Culture Program.
And I will second that, but please don't make me read that.
Yeah, and that's resolution number 2019-05-010R.
That one, yeah.
Okay. Dean Hazen is going to second. And discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, it passed. Okay, thank you. All right, resolution 2019-05-011R. This is a resolution approving the City of Urbana and Champaign, Urbana, Champaign County Home Consortium Annual Action Plan for the year 2019, 2020. And who will present this?
Hi, my name is Alyssa JG and I'm with the community development specialist. So in your package, you have our Urbana Home Consortium Annual Action Plan for fiscal year 1920 and then the resolution for approving the plan before we can submit it to HUD. And on April 12th, HUD notified grantees of their funding allocations for fiscal year 1920. Our home program revenue saw a 12% decrease and CDBG saw an 8% increase compared to funding levels of fiscal year 1819. The home consortium will receive $735,645 for its home allocation. And of the home program, the funding is divided between administrative costs, CHODO set aside, CHODO operating, and the consortium split, which includes the City of Champaign, Champaign County, and the City of Urbana. Urbana's CDBG allocation will be $442,000, sorry, $442,63. And HUD guidelines state that the annual action plan must be submitted within 60 days of final allocations being released. This means we cannot submit our plan any later than June 11th. Approving the annual action plan now would allow for submission ahead of the June 11th deadline and staff could begin processing the notice of requests for release of funds, which is required prior to HUD releasing any funds for the plan. At its May 7th meeting, the Community Development Commission voted unanimously to recommend that Urbana City Council approve the annual action plan with changes, as recommended by HUD. Therefore, the Community Development Commission and staff recommend that the Urbana City Council approve the resolution for the Urbana Home Consortium Annual Action Plan fiscal year 1920.
Okay, there's a lot in that plan. Are there any questions? Okay, Bill Brown?
Yeah, on the CDBG programs, I like the summary you guys did this year on pages four, five, six. That's really helpful. I was looking for the programs for the capital improvement projects, blight reduction and code enforcement. That's listed in the CDBG programs on page four. And then you go to the actual annual action plan on page 26. And it lists most of those, but didn't list anything for the capital improvement projects. And that's a pretty big chunk. That's about a third of our CDBG money. Is there, are there any specific allocations for capital improvements?
One thing I know we are talking about is street lighting.
Okay, it's just kind of, but it's open for now. And we're just going to flesh that out over the next few months or something?
Yeah.
All right, thanks. Oh, there was one other.
Yes, Bill?
There was a zero at the top of page 29 in the plan for funding for property acquisition. There's a zero. There's no dollar amount in that. So that might be a typo that you need to?
That might be a typo. And to be honest with you, I do not know if there's supposed to be a number there right now.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Eric?
Did the change in the relative funding amounts for the two components, did that reflect any judgment on our prior performance? Or was that more a change in priorities emanating from Washington?
I believe it came from higher up in HUD.
Now, I had a question too, Sharice. Is it Elise? Is that right?
Alyssa.
In the CDBG funding, I think one of the elements is neighborhood cleanup will be funded at the rate of $8,000. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that a one, one-time event in the year or will that be two times in the year?
We have changed it to one time a year. We just had our last one on May 5th.
Yeah, I know, and I was out of town and it really was a bummer because I have stuff I really want to get rid of, but can't be doing it if I'm not there.
Budgeting is a concern, which is why we only can have it once a year.
Yeah, it's greatly appreciated in my, in my neighborhood. Thank you. Any other questions? Is there a motion then? Yeah, Elise, I don't know. Sharice?
That's okay. With the cleanup, the neighborhood cleanup day?
Yes.
And you said there's, that's an $8,000 budget that's given. So is that an increase, is that a decrease from what it's been before?
I was not here previous years to know what the budget was.
Okay, okay.
But John Schneider, I think, is moving forward with an answer.
I think we kept the neighborhood cleanup budget flat, meaning it's the same as, as was allocated last year. And speaking with Sheila, she said that they were, because we had it, we've gradually over years had to reduce that program as popular as it is because the funding needed, it just, it just hasn't been there. And as, as our funding, grant funding has decreased over years, we've had to reduce that program accordingly. So what we did this year was we consolidated the site to the lot across from Dart. And it was, it was very popular for that day. So we're, we still don't have all the numbers back yet on how much the total was for that day. But if, if we can do two, if we can find a way in the budget to do two, we're going to work on that, maybe a fall and spring cleanup. But it's the same as it was last year. And the challenges are, we have other things to, you know, neighborhood improvements, street lights along Kent and things like that that we're putting our funding towards.
Okay, the other question I have is regarding the, the senior, Urbana senior repair. And there's only $10,000 allocated for that?
Well, typically, I think the senior repair per household is $950 or $1,000. It's been, it's been a while since I've been directly involved in that. But that would provide assistance to 10 households. But we probably have, what has happened in the past is some programs aren't fully expended the previous year. We use that, we carry that fund over to the next year to be used if there's a need. So there's likely some funding left in the senior repair program budget for this year that'll be carried over to next year.
Because the other thing I wanted to ask regarding capital improvement projects and blight reduction, code enforcement, that kind of thing, can any of that money be used regarding the senior? Because that's $157,000, blah da blah. Can any of that money be moved if, you know, like for blight reduction, let's say it's just a matter of someone's home needing to be re-landscaped or something, is, is, you know, a senior person? Is there, is there any way that you can use that money to help with the senior repair?
Well, the program doesn't deal with landscaping. It deals with basically assisting seniors and staying, you know, remaining in their homes. At this point, to my knowledge, and I go back quite a ways, I don't know that we've ever run out of funding for senior repair. So basically, it's based on need and what we have. If we needed to reallocate, if we get to a point in the year where we're going to run, run low on funding and we'd likely have surplus and another line item, we would be able to transfer that funding.
Okay.
To address that need.
Okay.
Jared?
I'd like to make a motion if permitted.
Certainly can.
I'd like to move resolution number 2019-05-011R, a resolution approving the City of Urbana and Champaign slash Urbana slash Champaign County Home Consortium Annual Action Plan for FY 2019, 2020, be forwarded to the full council with a recommendation for approval.
Seconded. And Eric Jacobson makes a second. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's good. And it goes forward. Thank you. All right, now we're coming down to two items of discussion. And the first is consolidated social service funding for the year 2019, 2020. Will you be staying with us?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So in your package, you have our funding recommendations for agencies applying for the Consolidated Social Service Fund fiscal year 1920. And our staff this year included City of Urbana staff, Cunningham Township staff, and Councilwoman Mary Ellis Wu. And we worked on developing the process to accept applications and to review applications. So that was our committee. And the application process underwent a lot of changes this year. So we required that all social service agencies interested in, interested in applying attended one of our two workshops. And then agencies who had signed in at the workshops, which everyone did, they received the application via email. And this year, we also asked that agencies submit a single application to me electronically before the deadline on April 8th at 4:00 PM. And previously, agencies would submit multiple applications, but that also would ask for duplicative information. So we tried to streamline the process as much as possible. And then agencies were required to ask for a minimum of $4,000 this year. And the minimum award would then be $3,000. And once everyone had submitted their application, they were given a confirmation email so that we could confirm and track that we had accepted it. And during the reviews, in previous years, the CSSF committee would often do follow-up phone calls. This year, we really pushed for a fair and transparent process, so we did not do any follow-ups during our review. And this way, we looked at the information that was given to us by the deadline only. And before the application was due, we had technical assistance open for five weeks from March 1st to April 5th. So Danielle and I would meet with agencies or we would answer any phone calls or emails that they had sent to us. And that way, we could ensure that their application was complete. And this year, we had 34 agencies submit applications and they requested funding for 45 programs. And after thorough review of all the applications, our committee is recommending funding 17 agencies and 18 programs. In order to review all of these applications on the same metrics, we used an evaluation tool, and that was found in your packet as well. And we really looked at completeness of applications. And we looked how well a agency was serving some of the most prominent needs in our community, as well as city council goals and priorities. Consideration for funding also related on, or, sorry, related on the agency's capacity to serve. So we looked at their financial health and their ability to support a program with other resources outside of funding from the consolidated social service funding and their capacity to increase service to Urbana residents. This year, we did not fund any government or quasi-government agencies or agencies that held their own taxing bodies. Sorry, I got lost here. But there were a few agencies too that we would like to recommend for funding. And we are taking everyone's input on those because they didn't meet all of our criteria. The first one would be the Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center. They did not submit a complete application. There was not a specific program budget for their youth development program. However, this program helps prepare Urbana youth to transition into college or the workforce after high school. And the Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center serves 100% Urbana youth. So we recommend funding them at $17,000. And despite the committee not wanting to fund, not electing to fund any governments or quasi-government agencies, we do recommend funding the Champaign County Regional Plan Commission's centralized intake for the homeless. This program is funded by grant money from HUD and is also mandated by HUD. So to better serve our homeless population, we would like to provide these additional funding sources so that centralized intake can increase their staff support. And we would also like to address that we did not recommend funding for the Regional Plan Commission's Youth Assessment Center. We were misguided when it came to understanding their program budget and their resources, but it still has a very, the program still has a very valuable impact for at-risk youth in our community. So we are open to input from the committee of the whole in regards to funding the Youth Assessment Center. And if you guys have any other further questions regarding our funding recommendations, the evaluation process, or submitted applications, we are happy to answer those for you.
Okay, there's quite a few, so let's just go around the room. I'll start here with Bill Brown.
Need a clarification on the evaluation criteria. Number B, percent of Urbana residents served. Should that first number be some other number than 31%? It looks like you get two points for 31%. If you happen to hit 30% exact on, you get one point and under 30%, zero.
It should be if you serve 31% or more.
Okay, but still, the only way to get one point is to hit 30% exact.
The one point, and we, we have the points just as a metric, but we did not add them all up and say that this is how you're funded. But really, it's just so we have a baseline of what's our goal. So if you have that one point, you've made, you've reached our goal. That, you know, we would really like to see that you have served 30, at least 30% Urbana residents. But if you're serving more, then we're going to give you an extra point.
I'd make sure it was 30.1%. I guess if I was filling out the form then. Okay, that was my question.
31.1%.
Dennis? Dennis, can I go out of order?
All right, go ahead then.
Okay, since I was on the committee, I just wanted to add it some. Alyssa did a really good job. It was, it was a long process. I think all the committee members worked really hard, so I want to thank everybody for working on this project. Two things that I wanted to talk a little bit about. The first one was the scoring sheet because you brought that one up. And really, that was so that we could all independently look at these applications, use this as a guide so that we could have a conversation. So it wasn't that each person brought their top-ranking people and said, "All right, I want to fund these people." Rather, we went through every single application and we talked about whether or not we thought that it was worth discussion or we definitely wanted to fund them. And we use this more as a guidepost rather than we're going to tally up the score, divide by the number of committee members. So I hear you when you say that the 30% was a one and, and that one was a little... So I hear you when you say that the 30% was a one, and, and that one was a little, if either actually was another error on this. But in the end, if you scored low, it didn't necessarily mean that you wouldn't be funded. It was just for us to have a conversation. The second piece that I wanted to bring up, which I thought was a really good idea, based on Danielle, which was fee-for-service programs. So there's three here that are fee-for-service programs. One is the, I believe Meals for Wheels, Meals on Wheels. So we were recommending at least $8,000 with the stipulation that every Urbana resident would be given a $3 discount. So we would spend up to $8,000 for them. In addition, the Don Moyers Boys and Girls Club would be paid per youth in Urbana that would be transported, and I think there might have been one more on here. Let's see here. Oh yeah, per client fee, number four. So that one is, let me find number four. Home care, family service home care. So if I remember correctly, that was senior home care, and that was counseling for services for senior home care. So meeting in their home and talking over what services were available for them. So I think that that is something that we should include in our conversation, and that is a bit of a shift from last year. There's more funding agencies that we're recommending for funding that are that fee-for-service model. So thank you, Dennis, for letting me go out of order.
Well, thanks for that. Thanks for that clarification. Helps us understand the process a little bit better. Other? Yeah. Yeah, Eric, raise your hand again. Yeah, I see it, okay.
Okay. I love pointing out funny typos. I would love for it to be 1920, but it's really 2020 that we're talking about. But, but more substantively, I don't understand the discrepancy between the $212,000 total under FY 1920 and the $225,000 that's in the budget. Why, why are those not the same amount?
After adding up all of our funding recommendations, we reached 112,000, and I think Danielle, do you have more you want to speak on that? I know you just sent out an email before this meeting.
Ah, okay, I didn't see that.
We have Danielle Chenoweth here.
Yeah, Danielle Chenoweth Cunningham Township Supervisor. There, I sent out, I actually read the memo twice, and the second time I caught something. I'm sorry, I sent an email to you right before this meeting. So the total, since this is both city council money and town board money, essentially the total is $250,000. It's not $225,000. What we've done, if you look at the budget for the town, the draft budget, and there's actually a memo note that I included in my email, we've set aside $38,000 in the town fund for rapid response funding. So we initially basically set aside $25,000. That was my recommendation to the committee. The committee was fine with that. And then as we put together the funding formula, we got to the, is it $212? So the difference brings us to 28, excuse me, 38,000. So essentially, although you're meeting as the city council tonight, I just wanted to clarify that the draft budget before the town board is, holds $38,000 of township funds for rapid response purposes. And you may recall that the CU Men Shelter was rapid response fund, and you also voted as town board for money for Courage Connection, although that particular contract did not pan out. So what I said in my email to you, it's essentially a united way in community foundation, as well as kind of best practices amongst funders, is to be able to hold some money for emerging needs, and in particular, because we're seeing a lot of shifts with re-entry housing, emergency shelter, and emerging needs at the township that the township entity can't address. So we'd like to outsource or contract. We'd like to hold that $38,000 so that we have some, the town board and city council and supervisor have some flexibility going forward. So that's the difference. Does that make sense? Okay.
I'm going to say it made sense to me, but, yeah. Jared.
I have one question for our committee members on two organizations that were left out, Courage Connection and Daily Bread Soup Kitchen. Both did not, are not being suggested to receive funding, and I was wondering why another of them were, made the cut, as they've often been funded in the past.
Daily Bread actually declined funding this past year, so we did not recommend funding them for this coming year. They were funded last year, but they chose not to accept that money. And then Courage Connection, can I speak on that one?
I think that was because the source of the money was federal money, and they didn't, that was a policy that they've chosen not to take.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, there was also concerns with Daily Bread Soup Kitchen that what they were, some of what they were requesting funding for is duplicative of other things in the community. So, you know, generally speaking, it's, it's great when an organization, since we did technical assistance, we were hoping that organizations would come to us and talk to us about the needs, and we could help to, you know, if they were providing, you know, offering duplicative funding, or, you know, had turned down funding from this past year, that would have been the kind of thing that I would have, as an agency, come to the funders and tried to explain, "This is why we chose to turn down the funding. This is why we're still applying." You know, "Is this a good match for your grants program," et cetera. For Courage Connection, I'm drawing a blank. Mary Ellis, I'm wondering if you remember.
I vaguely remember it was a program that didn't seem to fit. They, they asked for a specific funding of a program that...
Housing Coordinator?
Yeah, that's correct. So, so Courage Connection, as you know, does transitional housing based in Champaign, although we've funded them. That project is essentially in a closure process. Then they have an emergency shelter based in Urbana. That's an active program specifically for folks fleeing domestic violence. And then they'd ask money for a transitional housing coordinator. And so first off, I think a better match with our fund would have been the domestic violence shelter based in Urbana. The transitional housing coordination piece, because a lot of the transitional housing funds are in the process of being spent, and Courage Connection is moving out of, generally out of transitional housing, I think, and I'm happy to hear from other committee members, where we felt that that particular request didn't really fit the portfolio for the, our social service granting. So were there other things you wanted to add to that? That's my memory of the conversation.
Okay, that's pretty good. Okay, Sharice.
While you're up there, I was wondering about the Step Truce program that didn't seem to be recommended for funding either.
Yeah, so Step Truce, I should probably grab my computer and make sure, because they actually applied for two different programs.
Okay.
So I believe in the case of Step Truce, there was issues of incompleteness of application, requesting either all or the majority of funding that was needed. And I think those were the two issues that disqualified them from the funding process.
Okay. Then we had a question. Yes, Carol, maybe?
I just wanted to raise a question about something that Danielle had said, because I had spoken to Sheila about this on Friday, and you may be completely correct, but it's not my understanding, and so I just wanted to put that out there, which is that the $38,000 for rapid response is, perhaps it's $25,000 from the township, and I don't, I don't, that's not my business. But when I had spoken to Sheila on Friday about this, she said there was $13,000 that was unallocated. So that's different than being contributed to this $25,000 to make a total of $38,000 for rapid response. So that, I just want to raise the issue of whether or not the $13,000 has actually been allocated, because Alyssa raised a couple of things in making her report, like the Youth Assessment Center, that that money could be assigned as opposed to be unassigned. So I just want to raise that. We can sort that out subsequent to this meeting.
Okay, that's new information. Thank you. Jared.
I just had one thing that I wanted to address, since I see James Kilgore is here. James, I don't know if you were prepared to say anything to us tonight, but I'd like to ask you a question, if you wouldn't mind talking with us.
Okay, come up. James.
I just wanted to take the chance to check in with how First Followers is progressing along. You guys are proposed in this award as our second highest awardee to any organization in the community, and I was just curious if you could tell us what success you've had since we first funded you, and how you plan to use what we're giving this year going forward.
Okay, sure. So the major thing that we, that's been supported in the past has been the Emerging Adults Course that we've been running, which is, which we call Go Mad, which is, the MAD stands for Make a Difference. So we've had 12 people enrolled in our second course, which is 19 weeks, and I think we're in week 17 at the moment. And this time, it was, the classroom-based portion of it was, was held at Salt and Light in Urbana, and we had a higher proportion also of, of students, I think about seven of them are from, from Urbana. It's, it's been, it's been much more successful than the last one. We're, we're getting like 80, 85% attendance rate, which is quite high for that kind of, that kind of course. We've also been talking a lot with Bristol Place and with other employers about trying to get placement for people when they, when they're, when they're finished. We have been continuing doing the renovations in the house that we have, that we've been gifted on Louisiana Street in, in Champaign. So we're daily, let's see, I think today we were sanding the mud and getting ready to put the first coat of primer after putting up the drywall in, in the rooms and so forth. So we're, and people are picking up, you know, a set of building skills. And we, so that's, that's one piece. The second piece that we have is that we're, we're now consolidating an agreement with the, with the housing authority to operate a transition house, which is targeted to open on September 1st. And so we're beginning to do some fundraising for the operating, operating costs of that and designing the implementation plan. This is something we've been working on really for over two years. We had internal workshops two years ago when we did our research in the community around the issue of housing for re-entry, and we designed kind of an implementation plan at that point. And then we've been kind of waiting for the, for this opportunity, so now we're moving ahead with that. I have a, actually, we actually have a meeting on Wednesday with the IDOC to talk about how we can connect with them for bringing, for bringing people into, into that. There's a couple of other things, if you, we're also running a summer food service program in Champaign, which is going to work in a couple of housing complexes and provide breakfast and lunch for, for, for school kids, but more importantly, to try to involve, to try to connect with parents and talk about, you know, building a little bit more kind of solidarity in the communities, those are particularly communities that have been, you know, that have been hit a lot by, by, by gun violence. So that's, that's another, that's another piece. And then the last thing that we're doing is that we're also negotiating with the City of Champaign to talk about kind of working with some of the youth that they've been working with and trying to slot them into the Go Mad program, because there's some sense that we've had a little bit more success, and that maybe we have a model that could be, that could be used to deal with some of those, some of that constituency. So that's, we're busy.
Yeah. Thanks, James.
Okay, thanks. Bill?
Yeah, just a kind of a quick follow-up. Congratulations, congratulations on your expansion. I noticed your budget's up to about $260,000 now. Is any of this going to be?
Probably won't get that high, but that was, that's our dream budget?
I think in the past, you've used some of our funding for matching funds. Are you going to be getting grants where you need matching funds?
Probably not so much, but we're, but we have, I mean, we have also expanded our funding base, so we, we got some funding from, from WIOA to help with the, with the Go Mad course. We also got some national funding from the Criminal Justice Initiative, which is an organization of formerly incarcerated programs across the country. In fact, two of our, Marlon and one of our peer mentors just returned from a three-day workshop in New Orleans, where they were with about 50 other people that, you know, were from those organizations. So, yeah, so we are looking at expanding that, at that funding base.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
All right, are there other comments or questions? Yes, Mayor.
I'm, I'm still confused, I guess, on where exactly the funds for the Youth Assessment Center will come from. And I'm glad that that's being included, because it's a very important program. So is it coming from the, well, 212 is being recommended, and there's a total of 250. That leaves the 38,000. Is that where it's coming from, or where?
That's why I raised the issue. When, when I had spoken to Sheila about trying to understand what had happened with the Youth Assessment Center, and we, and we understood then that there had been some misinformation provided, and then she said, "Well, there's still this unallocated $13,000, so there's still the opportunity for the council without compromising any of the other recommendations to recommend $4,000."
Well, that, well, I think that $13,000, she assumed that the total was 225, and if you take away 212, that leaves 13,000.
Right. That's, that's where I believe the unallocated piece came from.
Okay.
And maybe Mary Ellis can give some insight.
I, I think the confusion is the 38,000 rapid response. That was a suggestion by the committee. So if you add 212 and 38, you get the 250, which is allocated. But we have down here potentially having 225, which would include that 13 that you're talking about, which would leave 25,000 for rapid response and not 38. So I think perhaps that's where the confusion's coming from.
Can, can I speak? So first of all, you are the ones who hold both budgets, so you can actually do what you want. Our recommendation was essentially to have this set aside, which is why I put it, and it would be township funds, and I put it aside in the township budget. I do want to speak to the Youth Assessment Center. I don't recall us having any conversation on the committee level about considering the Youth Assessment Center. So tonight, in the presentation, is the first time I've heard of this. It sounds like something that maybe came from your office, Carol, or the mayor, which is fine, but I just want to be clear that when we, we didn't discuss nor recommend that we consider the Youth Assessment Center. Obviously, any of the applications you all as a council could consider funding, you know, above and beyond our recommendation, but I want to be clear that that piece, that wasn't our recommendation. So that might be a priority that's coming from another place, and it would be helpful to have clarification about that, because it's the first I've heard it.
I'll, I'll clarify as best I can, and then we can do some follow-up on it, which is, I believe it was not, it was not put forward for further conversation by the committee, because there was a misunderstanding that they were being funded by police departments, and the Urbana Police Department at least does not provide funding for the Youth Assessment Center. So you're correct that it was not a recommendation, but that was, but it never reached that level of conversation because of some misunderstanding about sources of money. That's, that's what I was told. But we can sort it out.
Yeah. I don't, I think it was because it's a quasi-governmental agency, and we were looking at issues of capacity. I don't recall it being an issue of the funding source. But I just want to be clear, you know, different folks have different priorities that they bring to the table, and I think you all can discuss what you think are the appropriate priorities, but that was not part of our discussion.
Are there other questions that need to be answered at this time? And is there a recommendation? I guess it's a discussion, so we, all right, thanks. Remind me that what we're just discussing at this point.
I recommend we agree. It was a great discussion.
I'll discuss.
And Bill, you want to make some other comment, please?
Yeah, I guess the process has been a little different this year. Last year, we seemed to have more priorities to work off of, and youth programs and workforce development, I know were priorities, and this year, I just don't see much of that. It's a little frustrating that our top-funded agencies, Champaign County Healthcare Consumers, you know, is getting our biggest priority, considering that there's record numbers of people insured now, and, you know, and these, and the hospitals are supposedly spending tens of millions of dollars on, on health, health for the poor. on health for the poor and people that can't pay their bills. So, but going down the list of the scoring, I can see how they could score well. A lot of it is supports and promotes, fills gaps. They do a lot of that. So, I don't know. I just don't, don't see that as being really fitting what our city's highest priority should be.
Other comments? Yes, Eric?
I don't have a deep systematic knowledge of this, but my, just my sense anecdotally is that in spite of very, very, you know, wider insurance coverage than there used to be, and in spite of the fact that our healthcare providers, our charities that take care of everybody, somehow, it does seem that there are a lot of people falling through the cracks and who need help, either material help or advice, really informed advice about navigating the system.
Would it be helpful to share what the committee discussed on the topic of healthcare consumers?
Go ahead.
So, essentially, one of the things, and you'll see in the priorities, is, so, speaking as township supervisor, I'm representing the city, essentially, you know, we give $175,000 a year to extend the services of the township for the most vulnerable residents of Urbana. So, essentially, we don't, you know, it's a significant portion of our budget. It's about an eighth of what we spend on the poor, and what we have chosen to do, what we like to do is to concentrate it in those places where we can't particularly provide a service, or it's with a partner who's extending our reach. So, healthcare consumers is an example of an organization where we refer people daily from township to healthcare consumers. Healthcare consumers is the primary entity that helps people apply for LINK, SNAP, and TANF. It is a requirement of all of our programs that people receive all of the assistance that due to them first before they receive township. If I send people directly to the DHS office, which I can, it's a very different experience for them to go to the DHS office. It's very convoluted, and the success rate is not high. So, at this point, we've chosen to basically refer everyone, which is about 600 people a year, to healthcare consumers. So, we, I would say we are power users. The township is power users of healthcare consumers, and they play a really valuable role in supporting the township participants. The second thing, and I wish it was correct, and like, the expansion of Medicaid has done wonders for our general assistance budget in terms of medical payments. So, that's absolutely correct. The issue is that we have a marketplace approach to Medicaid in the state of Illinois, and what that means is that folks are basically dumped into, and I'll use that word dumped because that's what it appears to be, into whatever Medicaid program the state wants to dump them into. And so, they, I would say, a large number of participants, it could be the majority, but it's an extremely large number of participants, get assigned to Medicaid that is not actually taken by any of the service providers in our community. So, our participants require doctoring. They require medical verification to apply for social security assistance, but they can't do that if they can't actually, the doctors in the community don't take their Medicaid. If they are put into, let's say, I don't know if Harmony is one, but it used to be Harmony was one of those types of Medicaid providers that was just not, it was not taken by hardly anyone in the community. So, essentially, and there's a window of opportunity that's very small for someone to change their Medicaid. So, they have to know what they've gotten. They have to know who takes them. They have to apply for a different Medicaid provider, and they have to be accepted, well, they have to apply within a very small window. So, this year, it was a scramble, and we worked with healthcare consumers pretty closely to try to move folks off of the clients of Medicaid providers that no one takes in the community. So, I would really love to see that they not assign anyone a Medicaid provider in a community where no one takes that provider. That would be like the best of all scenarios. And instead, we have required this grassroots social service agency to do that work. And it's certainly not something the township, the level of like healthcare navigation and expertise, we don't have that in-house. So, I would like to see reform in the Medicaid system. I think if there was reform, and there was reform in generally benefit system, I think our need for healthcare consumers as a partner would decrease. But, that is one of the reasons. In addition to, I think they were one of the highest scorers in the scoring charts of most of the committee members because they fit those priorities carefully. But, from the township perspective, that's one of the reasons that we're recommending that funding level.
Okay, thanks. That definitely helps a lot. I know last year, we discussed having them do more activities in Urbana. So, when, if we're the power user, it seems like they ought to have an event at Urbana Free Library, say, across the street from you guys, to help people get signed up for the things they need to sign up for instead of having everything in Champaign.
And we've started conversations, but they're not complete about, like, first of all, we're, it has had someone onsite in township because 80 percent of our users have some criminal justice involvement, and so it helps to have someone onsite. And I've spoken with healthcare consumers, would it make sense to have someone onsite? There's no agreement there, and I wouldn't make, it's not really part of this conversation, but I agree with you that I think, you know, we're using so much that it's important to have that connection. I will say that essentially, it's harder for someone to get from our office to Salt and Light, where healthcare consumers does some work, than it is to get from our office to downtown Champaign. So, I mean, when you think about how people travel, it's not mileage, it's bus stops, and the bus stops between the two downtowns are really excellent. It's a great, you know, it's a pretty great system MTD has for the two.
Okay. Any others? Okay, that's, I guess, perhaps all at this time. I guess we're going to be deciding about the final allocations at future date. Thank you very much. Thank you, Danielle, for coming. All right. The last item here before us is a discussion again concerning the Committee of the Whole and Review of Development Projects by the Committee of the Whole.
I just wanted to give a little prefatory remark before Lori makes a presentation of the memo that we circulated, and that is just to say that when, you know, this issue has come up multiple times, and we thought it was important for staff to take the time for you all to understand the implications of what you were seeking, and that's what we hoped to accomplish through this, the staff work that went into this and the memo itself, to understand the implications in terms of competitiveness, in terms of process, in terms of resource need, and so forth. So, with that, I'll have Lori walk you through the research we did.
Okay, Lori?
There we go. A little temperamental over here. Thank you very much. So, yes, in response to the request to present some options on how to introduce the Committee of the Whole process into the typical development project process where items are sent to you from the Zoning Board of Appeals and from Plan Commission, that is what we're here to present tonight. A lot of the background and the research I go into in the memo, so I don't want to spend a lot of time on that. What I would like to spend the most time on, of course, are the options themselves. Before getting into that, I think it's important that we talk about what it is that we're talking about, and that's the kinds of cases that perhaps could be subject to a new, a new type of process. So, because I think that might be frankly the shorter conversation, maybe I can just introduce that now. Page five of the memo gives some suggestions on what we think are probably the kinds of cases that you have the most interest in discussing at Committee of the Whole. And just for those at home and in the audience, I will briefly list those. So, thinking that new plan developments involving new construction would likely be a candidate for that, but perhaps a small amendment might not be. New special use permits involving new construction, similar case there. Zoning, excuse me, zoning map amendments, commonly known as rezonings, to any zoning district except R1, R2, R3, which really are the single-family and the duplex zoning districts, R4 and above start getting into the multifamily. And then finally, major variances, if they involve new construction or a pretty sizable expansion, and putting an exemption here for single-family homes and duplexes so that we wouldn't run through the process, a garage that would like to be a foot closer to the property line on a single-family home, for instance. So, didn't want to bog down the process for a homeowner, but wanted to reflect what we think you were looking for, which was the larger size projects. So, I don't know if it's appropriate to ask for comments on that list now, or if you'd prefer to hold that to the end. I'll leave that up to the chair.
Yeah, well, all right. So, you brought it up. So, I could imagine another item, but does anybody have a comment about the list as presented so far? Yeah, okay, Mary Alice.
So, I think I spoke to several people about this issue, and Bill, I'm going to use you because you had an interesting idea. Bill's idea was that items that do not have a unanimous vote could come before the council, Committee of the Whole.
And Plan Commissioners, ZBA, don't have a unanimous vote?
Yeah. And that was, I thought that was an interesting idea, and I'd like to hear feedback from other council members on what they think about that.
Yeah, and Eric?
Yeah, I think that would be a good addition, a fifth bullet. I think the other four bullets are good, but a fifth bullet, anything that didn't get a unanimous opinion on the commission.
May I ask clarification on that?
Go ahead.
So, would that include non-development items? So, a tax amendment, let's say, or something of that caliber? I'm just trying to understand.
Right.
What that could be. So, let's say a new plan. For instance, our bicycle plan didn't get a unanimous vote a couple of years ago because somebody thought it didn't go far enough.
Right.
So, just wanted to bring up, you know.
Well, we could defer this until we get into actually how, for example, Option 2 would be implemented, because it seems as though there is a streamlined, I mean, Option 2 really splits two ways, and one of those ways is extremely streamlined, and the other is more deliberate. So, it might be that, and it's either streamlined or deliberate depending on how the Committee of the Whole responds to it. So, the Committee of the Whole could look at a non-unanimous vote and say, "You know, yeah, that's, okay, we understand that. That's nothing serious, and we'll do it the streamlined way." But, nevertheless, there would be the option of saying, "Oh, golly, that was actually a serious objection, and even though it didn't fit into our previously determined categories because it was something we didn't happen to think of, yeah, we ought to think about it."
Do you think that's a clarification?
Yes, that does clarify. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Bill Brown was the one who actually originally initiated the thought and passed that around.
I guess I was thinking of it as sort of a catch-odd, that, I mean, some of these, even zoning changes, if they're unanimous, probably isn't going to be a lot of debate. At least, the way I was thinking was, wouldn't be in addition to all these, but would kind of be the first cut. If it's not unanimous, then it would automatically go to Committee of the Whole. There may be other things that would go to Committee of the Whole. I think maybe plans. I mean, anything that doesn't depend on a developer's time. So, anybody, anything that's not, you know, initiated by a development process, so that would include plans, should always probably come to the Committee of the Whole.
And tax amendments that would also include.
Unless they're specialized things that are initiated by development or something.
So, are you, are you suggesting that tax amendments also go through Committee of the Whole? Is that adding to the?
Yeah. Don't they usually?
Committee of the Whole? No. Right now, nothing typically goes unless we know that it's a big issue going in.
Oh, okay. Usually, they're pretty long and complex. There might be some questions.
Well, the last set I don't think was. In fact, I think Mr. Jacobs had said, "This all sounds great," and that was the extent of that, the discussion on the actual items. But...
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that was just my thinking when I brought that up, was, you know, even rezonings and things could be unanimous and not really be controversial, but then if it gets to the council, we can always, you know, send it back to committee or something.
Okay, Jared?
One thought I had just had on that, based on all the things that have come to us, is that I feel like there's a lot of things that have come to us, Bill, that are nonissues, but had a single dissenting vote on Plan Commission. So, I don't think that the qualification merely of a non-unanimous vote really fits the bill so much as, I would say, two or more dissenting votes on an item, because there's often a lot of ones that will receive a single dissenting vote, but we don't, we don't, it doesn't warrant much discussion from us. So, that is my only thought on that, on that suggestion.
How do people feel about that, making it, make the bar just a little bit higher? Eric?
When I was in school, we read Emerson, who wrote, "If," he wrote kind of sexist. He should have said, "If one person," but he did say, "If one man is right, he has a majority."
That's a heavy bar, then. That's pretty strong. Okay.
So, I would, I would say, let's keep the unanimity requirement.
I would disagree.
Okay. So, that's a disagreement.
And if, and you may be right. You may be a majority of one.
So, then we do have a series of options to look at. And I do appreciate, and I'm just going to be part of the discussion because I think a discussion is kind of an open thing. I appreciate the table of nearby communities and how they, we're talking about kind of the time lapse between an event when it leaves the Planning Commission and appears before the city for action. And some of the problem with sending it directly to the Committee of the Whole is that the Committee of the Whole might be meeting basically three working days, or two working days, two full working days, after the Planning Commission meets, which doesn't really allow staff to prepare the memo. It makes posting the item in the packet practically impossible, and so there's a physical issue about how fast something can be taken to the next Committee of the Whole based on the schedule we have between the Planning Commission and the next Committee of the Whole meeting. And so, I've heard one suggestion, and maybe Mary Alice, do you want to like talk about that, or do I, shall I just summarize that for the committee?
Or, if it's helpful, I could also go over this table in case anyone wasn't quite sure what this was they were looking at, if that's okay?
Because we're talking about it, and perhaps people at home are not aware of the table.
Right. And we've obviously moved into the option discussion. I haven't had a chance to give you my two cents on that, so with the chair's permission, I could do that.
All right. Well, why don't you then, I'll give you back the option for us to begin completing your day.
Great. Thank you. So, this table was our attempt to try to summarize not only the different options, but also the timelines of the current process as well as those options. So, if you pretend this table is a calendar, and the month starts on the first of the month, in this hypothetical example, it's a Thursday, and that's also the Plan Commission meeting. So, then the current process, as you can see, the Plan Commission meeting's that Thursday, and then the 12th, the day of the month, is a regular city council meeting. And so, the process is, it goes through the Plan Commission, and I'm just using Plan Commission as a proxy. The ZBA makes it really complicated, so I'm not going to introduce that, but it would be a similar process. Current process, case goes to Plan Commission, goes to city council 12 days later. And then the options that are presented in the memo and that the chair was starting to describe, that Option 1 would put the Plan Commission meeting, and it's, you know, normal Thursday, first position there. And then the Committee of the Whole meeting that follows is that Monday, just a few days later. And as mentioned, there's zero time to produce a memo and get it out to you before the Plan Commission meeting has actually happened on that Thursday, because as you know, packets go out on Thursdays. So, one possible way to get around that is to say, okay, well, there is that Plan Commission memo that's out there. It's in the public realm. You could rev- memo that's out there, it's in the public realm, you could review that, then staff could come to that Monday meeting at the committee of the whole and present a brief summary of the plan commission meeting, that video is also, of course, available, one could watch it. But then, the benefit of, of option one, which I forgot to put in the memo for whatever reason, is that it really gets the comments that comes out of the committee, it gets them earlier in the process than typically what even happens now, or certainly what would happen with the other options. So there is one pro for this option in terms of getting comments from this body to the developer and to staff earlier. So there is that. But then what it would do is presumably, the item could then be forwarded to the city council the following week, which would then be the same processing time as we have today. So option two, and it was also referenced, that that could go in two different ways. So option two, in essence, would schedule a special committee of the whole meeting, sorry, Charlie, at the same date as a regular city council meeting, which provides a couple of different pros here, in that staff would be able to do minutes for the plan commission meeting, get those out to you, I know a lot of you rely on those minutes. It would also allow staff to do a memo to the special committee of the whole in order to follow up on any of those issues that came up during plan commission or subsequent to plan commission. And then what that does is it gives the committee of the whole that night, on the 12th day, an option. If, let's say, the discussion goes swimmingly and nobody has any issues, they could say, let's forward it to the city council that's happening in 10 minutes, and then you could vote on it that day. Or if there is sizable discussion, perhaps you need some follow-up, the committee could then say, let's go through option two B and send it to the next special city council meeting, let's say, or perhaps it's not, perhaps you need even more time at committee, you keep it in committee, you could get down the road a little bit farther. But option two provides that flexibility to deal with a case that isn't very controversial, and you figure that out during your discussion, and you make the decision on whether or not you want to, you know, deal with it that night or send it down the road. So then, option three is the option that would not require any scheduling of special meetings, but it, of course, has the longer timeframe involved for processing. So it would take the item from plan commission and then take it to the next regularly scheduled committee of the whole meeting where staff could actually get you a memo. So that's on day 19, and then the committee could have the option to forward that to city council the following week for final action, or, you know, keep it in committee as, as needed. So those are the options. One thing that I neglected to mention, that any of the options, and just to get to Carol's point, any of the options that inserts an extra meeting into the process, an extra evening meeting where staff would need to prepare a presentation and attend, that does add nine hours of staff time to the process, and you might think, well, nine hours isn't much, but then you think, well, on an average, and I haven't done the math throwing in if a, if an item is, doesn't get a unanimous vote, but on average, if there's 10 kind of sizable cases that we think might go through this process, that's 90 hours. And then you think, well, 90 hours doesn't sound like much, but then you think about some staff reductions that we've had over the last couple of years, and it really does start to add up. So what the staff recommendation is, is if the committee chooses to, chooses to change the process, we would suggest option two, and that way you choose if it's two A or two B, depending on the specific case. But then also, we are asking for some help with that in, in employing a limited term, so a one-year, let's say, part-time planner, to help make up for some of this time that, frankly, we just don't have.
And it would be limited term because we're proposing that you do this as a pilot and then see how it goes.
So in addition to that, I know that Chair Roberts did send around an email to staff, we provided some responses, I'm not sure if everyone saw that, I'd be happy to go through that if you would like me to. But thank you for allowing me to go through the, the specific options.
Oh, yeah, that's great, thank you, that helps clarify some things that you've proposed, and I really appreciate the time that, not only that you returned them to us within the area that we were like hoping to see them, but that we have like options to choose from. So now, I'm seeing the certain city clerk waving his finger, so, Charlie.
I was just going to point out that there is a council rule that you would have to change for pursuing option two A. The current council rules don't allow for committee meetings to precede council meetings. And so, so you'd have to look into that and, and the reasoning behind that.
Could appreciate that. Mary Alice Wu.
So as one of the people who's, who started this conversation, you know, based on Dennis, I wanted to say thank you for all the time that everybody's put in this, I know that there were multiple offices involved in this, and I, I think that you've clearly outlined several plans that kind of get at the heart of items that I'm concerned about. So I just want to review the three big things that I'm trying to achieve with this. The first one is to allow for enough time for the public to have input into the process and be able to have that conversation with the council. And so for that reason, I don't think option one gives us a lot of time to do that, so I kind of nixed that one off my list. The second one is to really allow council to have a conversation, and we're not allowed to have, we're not allowed to talk at the planning commission, and we're really not allowed to talk until something is actually presented to us. So allowing us to have that conversation speaks better to option two and option three. And the third one, and I don't want to lose sight of this one, the third one has to do with expectations of the developers. Right now, I think it's, if, if there is some hesitation by certain, by any council member, I think that some developers expect to go to a meeting and have something approved, and then are forced all of a sudden to see this opposition, and there's concerns that arise from council, and that is unexpected. And I think that we can prevent those types of unexpected concerns coming up if we give more time. So this is kind of why I like option two B rather than option two A, because it allows us to set that expectation for developers, that this process is going to be first a council of the whole, sorry, committee of the whole, and then the following week, the council. So not necessarily, and I'm going to get to the second point, which is the special council meetings versus the normally, regularly scheduled council meetings. So those are the three things that I was trying to accomplish with this. And my one question is, there isn't a proposal here that says to swap the meeting times of the planning commission, so I wanted to ask staff about that. Because that would solve my problem.
And what swap would you prefer?
I think, do they meet on the second and the fourth, is that right?
They meet on the first and third Thursdays, following the first meeting of the month by city council. It was designed that way in order to consider, I assume, in order to consider cases in a, in a fashion so that it went straight to city council, straight after plan commission. So their meetings are tied to city council meetings specifically, not to the.
So can we have their meetings tied to committee of the whole meetings?
Well, in theory, yes, however, it is May 13th, and everyone on plan commission has the meetings on their calendars, this room is booked for these meeting dates, we would need to re-advertise new meeting dates. To do that in the middle of the year would be difficult, I'll put it that way. Much easier to do it at the beginning of the year, for sure, but right now, it would be a huge inconvenience to our volunteers, I feel.
So I, I think that, because we advertise the meeting schedule once a year, is that correct? And those always are advertised, right? So I think that it would be a good suggestion to make a recommendation for the next year, and it's, it's the calendar year, not the fiscal year, right? So the calendar year, that we move those meetings from the first to the third to the second to the fourth. That would prevent us having to have special meetings, so.
But, and so, so may I then interject? Or would it be easier to adjust the, the schedule of the city council and the committee of the whole? Does it, is it necessary for the city council to be the very first meeting of the month? Is that how it is, or is it the second meeting?
What?
This, Charlie?
The same issue applies, that you would have to re-advertise and go through the whole, the whole, yeah.
Right, but we come all the time anyways, but the, the commission, our volunteers from the community, and they may have harder time to readjust their timelines.
We would have to change city code, and, yeah, there'd be a whole process.
Yes, but that might then automatically adjust the timeline between a council, a meeting of the planning commission and the first time that it would appear before the city council, sitting as a committee of the whole. I mean, that would be a direct adjustment to fix. So, all right. Okay, the mayor, and then Bill.
I appreciate the interest in looking at changing the times of the plan commission, but I would caution people to think about, number one, we are, these are seven volunteers, these are people who have scheduled these meeting times into their calendars, and they are on board for three-year appointments, and so they're all at different phases of their appointments, and they've made this commitment based on these particular time slots. So I would ask you to be very cautious about asking the plan commission to change the time of their meeting. I think we really need to be respectful of the volunteers' time, plus just the, the amount of time this room is booked every day of the week, so, so I just appreciate you taking that into consideration.
So it'd be easier for us to change than for the commission, you think? All right, all right, so, Shriis, oh, I said Bill.
Just, if we can, if we start a trial period this year, we'd probably have six months or so to the end of the year to see how many, how many cases actually would have to go to committee of the whole first, so if well over half end up going to committee of the whole, it might be worth considering some kind of schedule change in the future, but, so we have some time, I think, to look at how it might work. The other thing, just, I mean, on the cost side, just adding one meeting 10 times a year is adding $23,000 in costs. What's our fee for these, like $500 or something?
Most of them are about $200.
Yeah, so each zoning change or each PUD costs thousands of dollars in staff time.
Yes, PUDs, we charge slightly more, but not the staff time.
Is, as, do we charge that to be competitive with other cities, or is there some reason?
Yes, we are still well above what champagne charges, but nowhere near what it costs to process.
Okay.
Shriis.
My question, too, is regarding how, in the time, I like option two A and two B, but my question also is because, and because they give plenty of time in between, but also, I know, I pop over here for all kinds of reasons, I have that kind of open schedule, is it possible, or is it, or would one be capable of possibly meeting with someone, you know, just saying, just to get clarification about something or information about something, or do, would, would one of us, since we cannot be more than two in a room, which is, that's the other reason why we, why we're talking, even having this conversation, is because the only time we get to really talk about anything openly is like right now. So, so my, my point is, is that if, if there, that, that information comes up before one of the meetings, and, and two of us, say, feel compelled to get some clarification before even one of these options, it, would it be okay for us to just come in and talk to someone?
Please, yes, we would encourage that, encourage, if you have any questions when you're reviewing materials, ask us, we'd be happy to be a resource for you, we are there to provide you with the information. So yes, definitely contact us, and we'll be happy to walk you through anything.
And, okay, I'm going to stop right now.
Okay, Eric?
It seems to me that option two, and I guess, we don't have to choose now in advance two A or two B, that'll be chosen on the fly on day 12, whether, but it seems to me that that meets, I think essentially, all the criteria that, that I was concerned about and that I sensed other people were concerned about. It does give us a chance to discuss the proposal in public as a group prior to the meeting where we have to vote on it. But it also gives us the chance to decide, oh, we've got all this resolved, and so we'll have it on full council that same evening, and, and, and we'll, we'll vote on it. Also, if a majority of the, if all of the time we invoked two A, then the staff time wouldn't be any greater than the current. So, so we don't, so we have a chance, if, we have a chance that, that maybe we don't even actually need the extra money, although we can put this in the budget as some sort of contingency, but, but I think, I think that option two, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm looking back, the thing that triggered a lot of this was the Gather Project, and that was definitely a canary in the coal mine. If you have two members who tried really hard to understand everything about a very important project, and finally felt compelled to abstain, obviously something went wrong with the process. And, but I think option two really, to me, and option two with the, you know, categories that you've proposed for, plus the non-unanimity, I think that should give us a procedure that we can probably work with.
Mary Alice.
So talking about the 90 hours for a moment, if I remember correctly, there was, Union Gardens was the developer for up on north on Fourth Street, is that right? How many times have they come back here? Do you remember?
I don't, because then I also get this meeting confused with plan commission, so maybe two or three.
They came back here a number of times, right?
In front of this body, plus plan commission was once or twice.
I think at least three, of course, that was an annexation and a rezoning, and there was a lot of meat there. So I, I think that, I think that staff is pretty aware of some of the projects that might be of concern to council, and in the past, every once in a while, something has come before committee of the whole instead of council, but in addition, we've asked people to come back. So I, I, I mean, I hear you that it takes an additional nine hours to, to, you know, prepare for something and to attend the meetings and so forth, but at the end of the day, I think that this actually might not cost you guys more time, because we are already costing you guys more time when we have questions. So I feel like, I think we should give this a try, I think we should give option two a try, I think that we should keep in mind, and maybe in October, look at the timing of the meetings, to figure out if we would like to propose to the planning commission, whether or not the next year's schedule is changed, and to, you know, just think about the number of extra meetings that you guys are attending. So, so that, that is what I'd like to propose, that we move forward with. As I said, I like to be better, but I'm hearing my other colleague say that two A is a good option potentially as well.
Could I just address your concern about expectations?
Yes.
So if, let's say, we're talking to a developer about the timeline, we say, hey, this is the timeline, and we give them two B, and then we say, unless, you know, it's a real simple project and you basically do everything that you're asked to do, then it might be, you know, we might be able to get them to vote on it that night. But that we could set the expectation of the longer timeframe and then the shorter timeframe, it's just bonus for them, then. See what I'm saying?
I, I do, I see what you're saying, yes. Mr. Chair?
Yes, Carol.
I would just like to strongly recommend that you not expect us to move forward with a process that we have, every expectation will take more staff time without allocating the resources for that staff. I mean, one of the reasons why it's been frustrating for you that, that planning staff hasn't been able to move forward with some of the, I'll call them special projects, is because there is no more capacity there. And I, I just can't, I can't let it pass that we would be pretending there is more capacity there. It's not a lot of money, but when we need the capacity, it will be too late to get it, because we need to advertise and find the individual, and to the extent we, that we have, that we find that we can't keep them busy because you all are just moving projects forward so smoothly that we don't have these additional meetings, that will give us some capacity to work on special projects. So it's a, it's a pilot, it's a one-year thing, I just, to me, these things go together. I just, to me, these things go together. New process, we're going to try, and the resources to make sure that it functions smoothly.
Yeah. And Jerry, before I call on you, I wanted, I wanted to, to read a, an email I got from a city council member in Aurora, but I didn't bring it with me. Does anybody have a copy of that? I, I just didn't print it out, and I forgot that I should. I thought, I thought it was very interesting. Aurora is the second largest, second largest city in the state, and I asked them how their process was. Check that out, okay, all right. So, so my friend is a member of the Aurora City Council, and he said, hi Dennis, our development and rezoning, et cetera, proposals goes first to the Planning Commission, then to the Standing Committee of the City Council, which is a Planning and Development Commission, or Subcommittee, which he chairs. Then it goes to the committee of the whole. Then it goes to the city council. Now, they have three steps of review, which allows the public to interact with the community. And I think one of my concerns was lack of time for the public to be aware of what's coming for them, especially when it's a larger issue in a development process, which may affect their neighborhood very directly. So we're being streamlined, you know, for our awareness, but the concern is that the first time that the public actually probably zeroes in on the fact that this is, something that's going to happen in their neighborhood, is when it first appears before the council, however it meets, as the city of the whole, committee of the whole, or the city council. A lot of people are not tracking things that happen in lower committees. And he says, yes, not everyone may know about these cases, because by statute, the only people, only the people within 150 feet of a development or a rezoning issue have been notified in advance by the Planning Commission. We like the process like we have it, because it allows more review, input, discussion, et cetera. It gives the city council more time to digest it, and it allows for the more public input. And that's what they prefer, and they provide it to their community. So that's really one of, one of the reasons why I thought that I had an issue with the process, was not necessarily for our convenience, for, but for the public to have its due process in the democratic setting of open forum here in the city council. So that's a consideration that I have, and, yes, Option Two B might be one way of doing it, but I would very much like to avoid Option Two A in most cases, when, when the issue is contentious. Okay. Jerry.
So I think if that, Option Two is going to move forward, and it seems like it has a consensus of everyone, it has my consent, I think it's the best idea proposed. Lori, in, that was something I was going to bring up, Dennis, was that we need to set a protocol for that, but I don't think it needs to be necessarily any different than, I'm not sure what our, what our process is to move something forward. Does it need a motion and a second, Charlie? Any, any, any time that it's in, that's, if we were going to have it in that special committee to invoke Option Two B versus Option Two A?
This is a discussion, and you can simply direct staff to proceed in the manner you choose.
But I think he's asking something else.
You're missing the point of his question. You're, you're missing the point of his question. He's asking what would, what would be involved in invoking, really, it's invoking Two A, because you would, in the same, you know, in the same evening, you would be taking up, he's asking you a procedural question about Option Two A.
I'm just saying, if this is going to become a procedure, we probably need to put that into place and decide on what that procedure is. How many votes are needed to invoke A versus B? If it's simply a motion and a second, therefore, two council members must do it to, to invoke Two B. It's not just, I mean, we have to have a consensus of some kind to invoke one or the other.
I think this is more a legal question than it is.
Our city clerk is correct that we do have a rule that provides that a city, a committee of the whole meeting cannot proceed a city council meeting on the same day. That's Rule Two, I believe. Rule Nine provides that, if you don't follow that, it's not, that, the rules are procedural only. If you fail to follow the rule, it will not affect the legality of any action item. So what I would recommend is, if you, after discussion of a particular item, you move to suspend Rule Two and advance the item onto the city council agenda that night. If it looks like you're going to pursue Option Two B, and you're not going to know this until you really get into the discussion, or at the very least, get a, you know, sense of something because of what the Planning Commission forwards to you with staff's excellent write-up of what happened, and what the issues are. At the special committee of the whole meeting, it would, it would be just like any other committee of the whole meeting, a motion, a second, and a vote, to move it on with a, some kind of a recommendation to the special city council meeting on the 19th day.
Okay.
Either way, you're going to need more than just a motion and a second. You need a vote.
You do need a vote.
Because a motion of second is merely to keep something in committee, or keep something in council.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Yeah, it's Mary Ellen.
I just wanted to comment on the proposal for an additional 50% time person, because that was brought up, and I'm going to quote you next time, Carol, when you tell me 23 isn't a lot of money. I've got you on recording now.
I've been working on the budget, so it's, it doesn't seem like a lot of money.
So, my hesitation with the additional 50% is because we're talking two weeks' worth of time. So it seems, and I also understand that you need a quality person to take on this position, and you can hire somebody for 90 hours for a year. So I get that, which is why, since we're doing this pilot, that's, that's why I'm very hesitant to support the additional 50% time person, because we have such a mismatch between the number of hours that would be required to do this. Now, I would certainly be willing to entertain it if there were certain things that have been kind of put on hold by the council because of lack of time. If there was a conversation in terms of other things that could be done, that would be able to be researched, special projects and so forth, that councils talked about, that we've been told that there isn't enough time, I'd certainly be willing to consider it then. But you see the mismatch between 90 hours and halftime person.
Yes, but I, but I also know that there's already a mismatch between expectations and staff capacity. So they're already being asked to do more than, than we really have the capacity to, to do, and I'm not going to put Lori on the spot, but you need to understand, when, when, when most of the staff is here, they're earning comp time at a rate of one and a half hours of regular time. So it, what, what would be interesting, but I, like I said, I'm not putting Lori on the spot, is, is their capacity to take the comp time. So, you know, if, if they can't take all that comp time, then you really are, your expectations have exceeded what we're paying these people to do. And that's not fair. And that, and that affects our ability to retain staff.
And I do appreciate the fact that, finally, we actually sort of have a sense of the energy and the funding or the, the cost that it takes for staff to come in the evening to sit and listen to our long debates. We're doing it almost for free, but you're paying people more seriously for it.
They're not doing it for fun?
All right. You know, and we've never really, you know, been part of the conversation about, you know, what your actual department costs are in relation to this, so it's kind of actually very interesting to have that transparency. Yeah. Eric.
Yeah, just, you know, put it in your budget, put it before us, and we'll decide. Make your case.
Well, I think the mayor has chosen not to put it in her budget, and if you would like to propose it, then you can figure out what you would like to trade off.
Oh. So let's, yes, ma'am?
That discussion will take place next week. Starting next week, anyway.
Okay.
I'm sorry that I gave a little advanced information, but--
It's still up for discussion. You guys, get your heads together and figure out what you want us to do.
And then, but all, all council members have to get out their X-acto blades to cut the budget in some manner. Okay.
Can I, can I make a comment?
Yes, you may, ma'am.
I, I just want to tag on to what you said, Dennis, because it actually is very profound. And I'm, I'll go back to, I'll put on my former city council hat, and so for eight years, I sat on the city council, and, and, you know, there were a number of times when we, as council members, would, would ask staff to do things. Oh, how about this, and do this, and, and would you look into this? And, and we were in the habit of doing that. And we were never, ever told what the cost of those requests were, and what it meant in terms of staff time. And I think part of that was a reflection of not having a city administrator or a city manager whose job was to, to remind us of that, and to really look at those costs in terms of the impact on the staff and the impact on city resources. So, so that's what I'm finding is extremely valuable now, that, that Carol is here in this position, is that, that she is requiring us to consider those costs as we go forward. So, so I think it's useful for all of us. It's been very, it's been very illuminating for me, I can tell you that.
Yeah. It's interesting, it's a balance, because obviously, now, we're really in many different ways being asked to justify ourselves financially. And I think that, that the role of the city council is not to make judgments based on fear of having a budget overrun for directing staff to assist us in making good decisions, and yet, we don't want to be wasting staff time unnecessarily. But I think that we have a right to expect service as elected officials. Anything else that anybody would like to say about this, and I think we'll probably end up perhaps having a resolution, or an ordinance, or something coming to us in the future. Our expectation would be what? Maybe in a couple of weeks?
Well, we'd like to have it be part of the budget discussion.
The budget discussion.
So it'll become before the budget, be a budget discussion before it becomes any kind of policy? Or, I guess that's what I'm asking.
And I'm wondering if it's really wise to make the needs of the public and our own interests in having due process become a budget question, rather than a, a question of democracy or fairness.
Everything that we do is a budget question. Because--
Not, not, not everything that we do, but I think everything that staff does.
If we're paying staff to do it, it's a budget question. So we'll, we'll have some options for next week.
Yeah. The, what we're discussing, I mean, there are two aspects to what we're discussing here. One, of course, is budget. The other aspect is not something, if I understand it correctly, that would be embodied in an ordinance. It's something that would be embodied in an understood procedure. Am I right about this? Do I have, do I have this right? I mean, I mean, this Option Two isn't going to be in an ordinance. This Option Two is going to be codified in a procedure that we all agree we're going to follow. Is that, is that correct?
Well, to the extent that it would require an ordinance change, what we'd like to do is do it on a pilot basis. So before we go through all of the, whatever would take to, to codify it, we want, we just want to test it out for a year, or however long.
Does it require an ordinance change? Jim?
I don't think so. I don't, I don't think it requires an ordinance change, because you're not changing your committee of the whole standard meeting, you're not changing your city council standard meeting, and you're not changing your--
Okay.
--Plan Commission meetings. It's going to require notices of special meetings, but that's required anyway.
Notices of special meetings, and for one part of this procedure, a waiving of the council rules for that item.
Also, you don't need a procedure for that, you just say, you know, the motion is, I move, I move that we advances onto the, the council meetings' agenda. And what it would, it would be on the agenda already, whether you move it there or not, it would be there, because you can't take action unless something's on the agenda. And if you decide to move, move it on to the 19th, the special city council meeting, then based on that consensus at the meeting, two minutes later, the mayor strikes, or the, I guess it would be the, you know, the city council would strike, the mayor would strike that item from the agenda, knowing it's going to a special council meeting the week later.
Okay.
There's no magic to it.
Okay. So we've got, we've got a procedure that we'll agree on, no ordinance, and, but the costs of the procedure will be reflected in the budget. That sound right?
If you make it so.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, but, but I mean, that's the prospect, that, that's the thing on which we are going to decide.
Okay. Okay. That perhaps concludes the discussion, and seeing no further, and thank you very much for that very good discussion. And seeing no further business, we are adjourned.
Yes.